Eighteenth, twenty eighteen, at seven P. M. in the City Council Chambers. Okay, let's rise and we'll have the invocation. Please vow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Thank you for the citizens of this great city. Thank you for the blessings with the United Gospel Rescue Mission as they have celebrated their fiftieth year here in Popper Bluff. Thank you for these citizens that have come forward to run for council to help us make these decisions and help that we do things that are pleasing in your name. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Cornman.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Black.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Here.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Disclosure of interest, any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Move on to citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, our consent agenda. The items in the, on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and consider it separately, he or she may request to do so.
Motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
As presented. We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, workshop item for discussion. Downtown Popper Bluff, Inc., Executive Director Jerika Fox will appear before the City Council to request approval for the discharge of fireworks in the city limits on July fourth, twenty eighteen. Good evening, and again, we'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, members of the council, Jerika Fox, five oh one Vine Street. I'm here today to request fireworks inside city limits, the same place that we do every single year. We use the location of Ray Clinton Park. The paperwork has already been signed and approved by Ralph Stucker, so now it's in your hands at this point.
I think it's a great deal. I move that we approve the recommendation for discharge of fireworks inside the city limits.
Second.
Motion and second. We just really need a consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, the City Council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to vacate five hundred and forty feet by thirty feet portion of an abandoned right-of-way lying west of Northwestwood Boulevard and south of two eighty dash one Oak Grove Road and two nine one one Northwestwood Boulevard. The applicant is the First Community Bank, Caris Smith &amp; Company Engineers, nine oh one Vine Street, Popper Bluff, Missouri. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, the applicant is the First Community Bank, and they're requesting to vacate a five hundred and forty foot by thirty foot portion of an abandoned right-of-way in order to continue the maintenance of their property. This abandoned right-of-way is along Oak Grove Road, lying west of Northwestwood Boulevard, south of twenty eight oh one Oak Grove Road, and twenty nine eleven Northwestwood Boulevard. In twenty twelve, the city agreed to return any excess portion of right-of-ways purchased for improvements to the Oak Grove Road intersection back to the property owner, in this case, First Community Bank. This is just a step in returning that property to First Community Bank. Although the portion of the right-of-way is abandoned, it does contain multiple utility services, and easement will be retained. This item was approved by Planning and Zoning, recommendation to approve by Planning and Zoning to the City Council.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to move item B to the voting session to be held on July second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to rezone property located west of Cravens Road and north of Industrial Park Road, County Road three oh two, from a C-two general commercial to M-two general industrial, and to approve a conditional use permit for a trash transfer station. The applicants are Chad and Sarah Henson, Route four, Box ten twenty-four, Piedmont, Missouri, six three nine five seven. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, ma'am. As the mayor stated, the applicant is Chad and Sarah Henson. They're requesting to rezone from C-two general commercial to M-two general industrial with a conditional use permit to construct a trash transfer station at this location. The land is exist, is currently vacant. The property is west of Cravens Road and north of Industrial Park Road. It's right next to the Ready Mix Plant, if you're familiar with that, it's at on the Industrial Park Road. Surrounding land use to the north is the golf course, to the south is county, to the east is M-two general commercial, general industrial, and to the west is residential. This property was annexed in two thousand and seven. The applicant, again, is requesting to rezone eight point six acres from C-two general commercial to M-two general industrial, and the area is conducive to industrial use. The trash, transfer stations are regulated by the Department of Natural Resources, and they have strict guidelines to follow. And I've included some of that in your packet, some of the inspection checklist and some of the requirements that Mr. Henson is required to meet by the Department of Natural Resources. The stations are, all the transfer stations in the state are also monitored biannually by DNR, and all city ordinances must be followed with this business as to any other place in town. The staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request with the following stipulations: an eight-foot fence installed around the perimeter of the property, and if the business sells, the new owner or operator will have to request a new conditional use permit to continue operation of the transfer station. Like I said, it did include a checklist from the Department of Natural Resources website in your packet. Ms. Kirby also has left at your seats some photographs, I'm sorry, they're not photographs, they're actually screenshots. I just went on to Google Maps and Googled a few of these around the state, and these are just the street view Google images of the, of a few different locations around, just to kind of show you the kind of condition that these things are kept in generally. There's actually one, one of the maps is, one of them is actually a map. It is, looks like it's probably the second one in your packet. At the top, it says one nineteen J. H. Williamson Drive in Saint Robert, Missouri. And what I did there, it, there's actually, I measured from the trash, trash transfer station to the city's water park, I'd say out of water slides and swim, public swimming pool and all that, is just over a thousand feet from their trash transfer station. Even closer to that is their local community center, so just to kind of show you in reference of where some of these things are located at, too, so.
Are all these Mr. Henson's?
No, no, these are just various ones around the state. Mr. Henson does not own the trash first station at this time. And this is just a, one of the steps of his process with getting approval from DNR to construct this. Before he can make an application to the Department of Natural Resources, he has to have proper local zoning, so this is kind of one of his, one of the steps in his process,
Now, when you're referring to, to transfer station, are you, are you telling us that they'll be transferring trash from one, from one unit to the other?
So I'll give you my, what, the research I've done and read about, and we actually met with the local DNR representative that does the inspection. So what will happen is, this, local trash haulers, some of the smaller ones around town, they'll collect all their trash, and instead of driving to Bloomfield to the landfill, they'll take it to Mr. Henson's facility. They'll dump it inside a closed facility. He'll consolidate all that trash from all the different carriers into one load, you know, semi-truck kind of operation, and that one load will be taken to a landfill.
So it's going to be actually stored for a short period of time in a building or a facility?
There will be a building on site, and I will let Mr. Henson kind of speak to how often that is, it's emptied and that kind of stuff. He can, he can tell you more specifically about that daily operation of, but yes, it will be consolidated there at that location inside of a building and then hauled to the landfill.
We don't want it to become a temporary landfill, you know?
No, and that's not, that's not permitted. It has to be, it can't sit there. It has to be taken and hauled away and disposed of properly. This is just a temporary, you know, like I said, transfer. It's transferring from these small garbage trucks into a larger semi-truck type load before it's moved.
Citizens can bring things themselves, larger booky items, might be an option.
That, Mr. Henson did say that during the Planning and Zoning meeting that that would be an option for local citizens. Local landlords, as they're cleaning up places, could, could take trash out there, and there will be a fee, just like you would pay if you went to the dump, but yeah. You know, I think that that's a, you know, we've talked a lot about, since I've been here and before I started, Mr. Massingham, about, you know, cleaning up the community. I think this could be a real asset to that. You know, you've got some folks that just don't have the capacity to be able to haul trash from here to Bloomfield if they've got a couch or a mattress, and so be able to have something like this locally, I think, could really put a dent in some of that stuff.
Okay, Mr. Henson, would you like to come up, or Billy, would you like to come up? And we were fortunate enough at Planning and Zoning for them to give us a wonderful presentation about this, and I think it is something that's going to help our city as far as the cleanup process and having a place for folks to be able to dispose of items and not have to wait for twice a year for Buffy of the Bluff or try to figure a way to haul it off themselves, so I'll let you guys share with the council.
Billy Cobb at Smith &amp; Company, nine oh one Vine Street, Popper Bluff. Just Chad Henson, so he's the owner, and he'll, he can speak to more, but basically there's a, there's a lengthy MDNR process that we got to go through, and one of those things that, as part of the, just the permitting is, we also, Mr. Henson has to put up a bond and basically bond this facility so that no one is left with basically trash in the facility. There's a bond there to clean it up if, for some reason, something bad ever happened or whatever, so there is that protection there. And then as far as Mr. Smith's comment about how long the trash, DNR has the guidelines on that, and like Matt already said, there's biannual inspections, and you got to have a record-keeping is, is one of the inspections they go through to kind of monitor this, but a twenty-four hour period is the longest it can stay, and so basically, he has to make some sort of accommodations, one way or the other, to get it out of the facility in twenty-four hours. So I think that, I think that was all the questions, but then, as far as the site itself, I was just going to show you. You've got Industrial Park Road down here, and the facility cannot face public traffic as part of the DNR guidelines, so the, the doors for the facility are actually going to face east towards the backside of the cement plant. So, so basically, from the road, you should not see any, any of the activities going on, so the trucks will come in here, dump the trash inside the building, and it's pushed over into a tractor trailer that's also inside the building, and then the tractor trailers tarps and haul it off to Dexter or whatever facility length when it comes to that. There's a scale facility as far as how it's charged, so no matter who's coming in, they're going to weigh when they come in, weigh when they go out, and we're setting back off the roadway a pretty, pretty lengthy distance, I think it's three hundred fifty, four hundred feet back. And then it's kind of, the way the grains are going to produce themselves, they're actually going, we're going to actually be sitting down, the golf course is over here, we're actually going to have to be sitting down, you know, hole away from the golf course. Again, we're facing east, so we're not facing the golf course anywhere in that direction.
Could be a barrier between the property line and the golf course. Backseat paper, some tamperage.
And then there's overhead doors that are on the actual openings, and those doors have, they have to be closable, lockable, so each night they're closed, the facility's closed up, it's fully fenced around, gated. Pretty much overview of the facility, I don't know if there's any questions on that, and then Chad, if Chad wants to comment on it.
What's the perimeter of the eight-foot fence that P. and Z. has requested?
The total length?
The, yeah, the actual perimeter. Okay.
The perimeter, yeah, so, so basically, the rezoning is for the whole property, but he's only planning on using a portion of this right now. I mean, if his business grows, I think he would love, love to expand the business, but initially, he's just going to, we're just going to permit about probably an acre and a half, two acres, permit to DNR. We currently own a trash business in Piedmont area. We service north of Popper Bluff, west of Eastern Popper Bluff.
So the fence perimeter will be the rectangle all the way from Industrial Park all the way around the entire, the area that you're going to use currently?
Permit area, yeah. And this area here will still be open for use if we want to do any other kind of work, it won't be permitted to DNR. Which, which another thing also is kind of deceptive as far as the acreage. This is the centerline of the ditch. This property line goes to the centerline of Cravens Ditch runs through here, so the ditch actually comes out here some distance, so it's not, you know, it's not usable either.
Covered tree, tree area.
And then this is the flood lane also, you know, of course, DNR's requirement, plus a lot of other people's, you know, we're building up here out of the flood lane, but the flood lane for like Cravens and all that is kind of, it just do, so kind of limits some of what you can do.
Like I said, we currently own a business in Piedmont. We service this area with roll-off containers, construction, things of that matter. This will be open to the public. It will be open for any resident, anybody in the community of surrounding counties, anywhere, not just trash haulers, it'll be open to anybody. Somebody doing a small remodel job, they don't, can't afford a five or six hundred dollar dumpster, they can throw it in a truck, haul it themselves, contractors, somebody cleaning out storage sheds, you know, the list goes on and on. This facility, you know, located in the city, and I could have put it in the county, we own some county, property out in the county, but I wanted to put it in the city, and I thought that was a real good location because I want the city to use it. I, I want it to be usable by all citizens, by, by everybody. I just think that location fit really good for it. As far as the building itself, it will be closed, that's all requirement by DNR. As far as the trash being removed, you're going to be bringing in loads a day, it's going to go out every day. The only thing that'll be sitting there might be a tractor trailer load that got loaded at, say, three or four o'clock, and you don't have time to get it to the fill, but it will be, it will be gone daily. On the weekends, I think DNR requires you to have two Saturdays, two half-days on a Saturday that you're open a month, but that will be the only length of time because it's going to have to go, because your trailer's got to be empty to put more in, because one thing we know, everybody has trash, and it just keeps generating and generating and generating, so that trash will be moved constantly out there. And we will contract with a landfill at some point, you know, of course, we ought to get it open first, but whoever can give us the best rate, whether it's Bloomfield or it's another landfill around. As far as the transfer stations, every community around us has one. You know, Little Town, Frederick Town has one, West Plains, Pocahontas, Kennet, Sykesville, Jackson, Cape, you know, everybody's has got one, and if you have any questions about them, a lot of those were grandfathered in, they don't have doors on them, nothing, this is open air, so this facility will be one of the newer ones built in the area and be completely closed. And all the leachate, if there's any, like there's some water and stuff whenever you dump trash, that's all contained. It's designed with drains in the floor to catch that, and it goes into a holding facility or a holding tank, and then that water is, is taken out and treated at a local wastewater treatment facility. We have to, and we have to show records for all that. We have to show records for everything we bring in, everything that goes out, everything we do with the trash, so I mean, it's all, DNR's got their thumb on it, which is, is good, so it, you know, there's, there's a lot of guidelines that we have to go by.
Now, one more quick question. You said it would be available to the public. How will they be charged by weight, by the weight?
There'll be a minimum weight. I mean, you come across, you can't have one bag, you know, but you come across the scales and you have a minimum amount, and then it'll go, it'll start from a tonnage point from there on. You know, they can pull on with, say, a thousand pounds might be the limit, where it's going to be X amount of dollars. Anything over that will be charged by the ton, you know, things of that nature. And they weigh in and they weigh out, and they'll get a ticket, you know, for that and receive everything.
Will there be any recycling, or does everything go to the landfill?
DNR, DNR does require you to have a drop-off facility for recycling. We'll have some containers sitting there for different types of recycling. Talked with Felicity already, and we will be able to just give that recycling to them, you know. We don't, we don't want any part of the recycling unless DNR requires us to do something else with it, which they don't. We will be able just to haul it half a mile across railroad tracks and, and give it to the, those who could have it, so. I'm a county commissioner in Wayne County, and so I deal with a little bit of this stuff. I understand a little bit of it, not in the magnitude of what you guys do, but, you know, I did, I want you to feel comfortable in, in knowing that we will be a clean operation, and this is the first step of several, so I can't move on until we do something here, but we really look forward to providing this for the, for the community.
How many people will be employed directly with it, roughly?
Starting off, probably two to three, could be upwards to five.
Do you have a manager on-site, or you service on-site manager for a period of time, or?
Well, you know, once we get open, I'll, I'll take care of all that, but at some point in time, yes, we'll have, we'll have somebody on, you'll have to have somebody there all the time. At least two people start immediately, one in the scale house and one on the loader, taking care of that, but I really feel it'd be an asset, you know, I mean, like I said, everybody's got trash, and so it's, it's something that other communities see a value in, and I think it brings some value, you know, to the community, especially with clean up the bluff and things like that you have going on, could be a real help.
Do you need to say your address for him?
Give me my address.
Route four.
Yes.
It was, it was in what we read?
Seems to me like it'd be a really good thing, Mr. Henson. I'm glad to see that you're doing this, sir.
Thank you.
I have one more question, you know, for, for the planner, the planner. Thank you. Did we, did we have any opposition to this? Any business owners, property owners, or, or citizens in opposition to this project?
We did not have any, nobody called the office, we didn't have anyone at our meeting that was opposed to it.
Satisfies me. Thank you.
Well, as we all know, trash is here and everywhere, at least you've got somebody that's willing to deal with it and manage it and help take it away, so I support, too. I think it's going to be a good, good thing for our city if it goes through. With that, I entertain a motion and a second to move this item to the voting session to be held on July second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, action-required items, AA, Bill number eight zero eight zero. The City Council will take action on ordinance regarding a second amendment to the agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and First Missouri State Bank.
Move for first reading of Bill number eight zero eight zero.
Second.
First and second for first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing a second amendment to a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and the First Missouri State Bank.
Motion for second reading of Bill eight zero eight zero.
Aye.
Motion and second for second reading of Bill number eight zero eight zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing a second amendment to a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and the First Missouri State Bank.
Motion for adoption.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
And a second? Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number eight zero eight zero has been adopted. Item BB, Bill number eight zero eight one. The City Council will take action on an ordinance regarding second amendment to the agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and West Star Energy.
Motion for first reading of eight zero eight one.
Second.
Motion and second for first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a second amendment to a contract for management services between the City of Popper Bluff and West Star Energy, Inc.
Motion for second reading of Bill eight zero eight one.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, to execute a second amendment to a contract for management services between the City of Popper Bluff and West Star Energy, Inc.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number eight zero eight one has been adopted. Item CC, Bill number eight zero eight two. The City Council will take action on an ordinance vacating a portion of sewer easement at Cripple Creek.
Move for first reading of Bill number eight zero eight two. Second.
Motion and second for first reading of Bill number eight zero eight two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance vacating a portion of a sewer easement located in Cripple Creek subdivision in the City of Popper Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill eight zero eight two.
Second.
Motion and second for second reading, Bill number eight zero eight two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
Pardon me. An ordinance vacating a portion of a sewer easement located in Cripple Creek subdivision in Popper Bluff.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption of Bill number eight zero eight two. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number eight zero eight two has been adopted. Item DD, Resolution number one eight eight one. The City Council will take action on a resolution authorizing the General Manager as designated official for Southwest Power Pool Transmission Services.
Move for the reading of Resolution number one eight eight one.
Second.
Motion and second for the reading of Resolution number one eight eight one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
A resolution of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri, appointing the Municipal Utilities Department General Manager as the designated official for Southwest Power Administration Pool Transmission Services.
Motion for adoption. Second.
Motion and second for adoption of Resolution number one eight eight one. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Kirby?
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Mayor McVeigh.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution number one eight eight one has been adopted. Item EE, the City Council, the City of Popper Bluff, will meet in closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempt under the Open Meetings Law, section six one zero dot zero two one dot one, dot two, dot three, dot nine, dot eleven, dot twelve, dot thirteen, and dot fourteen, RSMO.
Motion to move into closed session after City Manager's report. Second.
Motion and second. Motion is second. Roll call, Ms. Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Cornman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Black.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor McBay.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. We will go into closed session after our City Managers' report. Mr. Massingham?
Yes, first of all, I wanted to thank our police and fire emergency responders. We had a large fire Friday afternoon on South 11th Street. A couple of the firefighters told me it was one of the hottest fires they've ever fought with all the metal and had heat indexes of 105 degrees, so it was a very tough fire to fight. Also, the utility department, the street department, utility providing all the water we needed, the street department provided a excavator to help pull out some of the metal while they were, so they could get in and fight the fire. I'd also like to thank Butler County EMS for, they came in and set up a tent, shaded area, they provided water, gave IV fluids to, I think, 25 or 30 of the firefighters, and it seems like they're always there when we have an emergency, and we really appreciate the efforts that they put out for us. Also, the community, whenever we have an incident like that, people just happen to show up with cases of water and, you know, anything the firefighters need or the police department, just want everybody to know we really appreciate that. Also, I received notification today from Smith and Company, starting on the 25th of this month, Roxy Road will be shut down to, they have to build up that portion of Roxy Road to the level of the new Shelby Road, so it will be shut down for a couple of weeks, and then once that's completed, they'll open it back up, it'll be a gravel area for them to drive over, but like I said, that'll start on the 25th of June. That's really all I have, Mayor.
I would note that our councilperson, fellow councilperson Barbara Horton is one of those who brought some things, and I was able to help distribute them, so it worked out good.
And Dexter, you didn't tell him Dexter came over?
Okay, and yes, Dexter came over and helped, and I was tied up in meetings all afternoon, I didn't think I got there till late in the afternoon, it was, but, you know, that was a really a tough fire, it looked like, so.
Yeah. They've got to be commended on the excellent job that they did. Come along those notes, too, the CMO Amateur Ham Radio Association is, has an invitation for those that would, ham operators that would like to be in, it's their annual, I think, national event, and I think the Emergency Responder EMS, Red Cross, different ones are a part of that, too, because when there's a disaster, sometimes ham radios are the way to get the communication out. They're going to have a meeting on, at Whiteley Park at Pavilion 2 on June the 23rd and 24th. I think it's going to be kind of an all-day event with a barbecue on Saturday night from 5:00 to 7:00, so anyone who'd like to join in at Whiteley Park on Saturday or Sunday for the Ham Operator Association, I think it'd be a good time. Anything else to come before the council? Jerika, you want to remind us about the parade, because we won't meet again before the 4th? Maybe we do.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we do. Sorry about that, well, go ahead. A lot of people are asking, is it going to be on Wednesday or on Saturday?
I can still give an update.
Thank you.
So, we will have, let me get that information, just so I give it to you correctly, so it will be on July 4th again this year. Lineups at 8:00 a.m. at Hydro Adventures Water Park again, and the parade will begin at 9:00. We'll do the same parade route as we have in the past, so we'll go over the ViDoc, Fifth Street, to Vine Street, Main Street, and down Cherry, and so then we'll end there. Awards will be given away, we're asking that all the floats go back to the water park, and that's where the first, second, and third place prizes will take over. This year, we were able to get the pageant back downtown. For the last several years, it's been at the Holiday Inn, so this year it will be actually here at the Coliseum, so doors will open at 10:00 and it will begin at 10:30, and by then, hopefully, the parade should be over, so that should be a good transition. A lot of times, we lose those parents to the parade because they want their child in, in the pageant, or vice versa, so we're hoping that that helps this year. And last year, we created a July 4th event at our Farmer's Market with no longer having the Butler County Fair or Bull Fest during 4th of July. There's nothing that really draws anyone to downtown or back into town, other than the parade and pageant that morning. Last year, it was a huge success, so we brought it back this year. It'll be at our Farmer's Market Pavilion from 5:00 to 9:00 that evening. We have a live DJ, we have probably 10 local restaurants in town that'll be set up, including different food trucks, and it all falls under our Farmer's Market area, so it's a $10 fee for them to set up, like I said, food trucks, music, and then we turn the Pavilion lights off, and it's pretty much a front row seat to Ray Clinton Park for the fireworks, so.
So the food service will be a fee, each one would purchase what they would want to eat?
That's correct, yes.